Virtual meeting, May 26, 2020. The time is 1:37 PM. And the first item on the agenda is for Mrs. Daly to take roll call.
Good afternoon. Mr. Raymond Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Daryl Love?
Present.
Ms. Kristi Morris?
Present.
Mr. Tyler Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Stephanie Spires?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Daly. I'd like to begin by welcoming everyone who has tuned in to watch today's virtual meeting. I know we have a lot going on. I actually just noticed in the background I have balloons from kindergarten graduation because a couple of teachers stopped by and dropped these off today. So I have a proud graduate in the house. And I know that our teachers and our administration are really busy. And so I appreciate everyone that's tuned in and watching right now. We'll start the meeting by reading our mission statement by Mr. Tyler Murphy.
Give me one second. I had it pulled up and then it went away.
No problem.
Here it is. "Our mission is to create a collaborative community that ensures all students achieve at high levels and graduate prepared to excel in a global society."
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next, I'll read the purpose of today's meeting. Pursuant to KRS Chapter 61, notice is hereby given that on May 22, 2020, the Chair of the Fayette County Board of Education called a special meeting in the Board of Education for Tuesday, May 26, 2020, at 1:30 PM. The Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will conduct a virtual meeting on Tuesday, May 26, 2020, at 1:30 PM. This will be a virtual meeting streamed online for the purpose of board consideration and approval of the vendor for the online summer learning platform, 2020-21 tentative budget, and 2020-21 salary schedules. The link for the meeting is fpcs.net/virtualmeeting. Please be advised, in the state of a proclaimed national emergency and under a similar declaration by the governor, it is not currently feasible for the board to provide meeting room conditions in the face of COVID-19, a highly contagious virus that spreads between people who are in close contact with one another within about six feet. Under these exceptional circumstances in which the Commonwealth of Kentucky is confronting a worldwide pandemic while nevertheless needing to accomplish critical public business pursuant KRS 61.840, the Fayette County Public Schools Board of Education will not provide a primary physical location for public viewing and will proceed pursuant to KRS 61.826 with concessions outlined in Attorney General's Opinion OAG 20-05. Thus, the public can access the media via the live stream but cannot be physically present at the meeting. And at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Fayette County Public Schools Superintendent Manny Calk.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. And me. I would also like to welcome any members of the public for joining us this afternoon for our virtual meeting. Our first order of business this afternoon is to ask the board to approve a contract for our summer learning platform. You will recall that at our regular meeting last week, we heard from Title I coordinator, Mindy Mills, about an online learning platform that provides adaptive, one-to-one intensive instruction and scaffolded supports in both literacy and mathematics for all learners in grades pre-K through eighth, including our English learners, our struggling students, our students with special needs, and our gifted students as well. Mindy is with us again this afternoon if any of our board members have any additional questions.
I just wanted to jump in and say I've talked to several elementary teachers in the past week, the advantage of having four in elementary school, and they are all excited that this is the curriculum that is being presented and that this is an opportunity that we're giving for all our students this summer. And so the feedback has been really positive.
I've also had really great feedback about this program. So I'm excited. I think they have used it at school, but we hadn't used it at home yet. But several teachers told me that they really loved it and so, and some parents. So it's exciting.
There's no further discussion.
I have a question. So I just want to know, and I know we talked a little bit about this, just briefly, about this particular program and the Power Scholars Program that we have had with the Y. And I understand we're going to go with this program, Ms. Mills, as we talked about this summer, but what do we think in terms of our engagement going forward with the YMCA and the Power Scholars Program?
I think at this point, let's realize that this platform that we're asking through you all to approve today is for our summer bridge for this summer, but then we also have this platform for the entire next school year, whether our kids are in school or whether we have to have extended closures again.
I understand.
I don't see any reason why if things were to get back to normal, per se, whatever that might be, the following summer, we would not want to continue our partnership with the YMCA and the Power Scholars Academy. It's just been difficult this summer because we're not able to have students in our buildings. And that program really is only going to work best if it's face-to-face.
Mindy, I think that the underlying question, and if I may, Board Member Love, is will the Y provide any summer learning in partnership with us this summer? Or because of the pandemic and the fact that we can't do face-to-face instruction, is the Y going to offer a program in partnership with us this summer or not? Are we still exploring it?
I guess the answer would really be probably no. The YMCA is helping us with some of the incentives for the summer bridge program through some of the funding that they had originally received for Power Scholars if their donors were willing to do that. They are also pursuing to try to continue to do Power Scholars on their own later in the summer if things open up enough that they could do that at their sites.
Okay. Yeah, and I think it's both looking about the immediate as well as the long term. Because I think, and I look, again, being a part of that program as we kind of brought that online and continued to grow it, you just kind of hate to see it kind of fizzle out. Now, I understand with the situation of innovation we kind of think about, and I understand this tool right here is just something to put in our tool belt to have not only advantage for our students during the summer, but also they'll have the opportunity to use the school if we find ourselves in another extended out-of-the-classroom type of experience there as well. But I think we all agree there's nothing like that one-to-one when you're in a classroom setting with students and that interaction, it kind of takes place.
I'll just add on that this tool, again, it's about being innovative and it's time and space. So on a time and space where we can't, it's not because of the pandemic and the health considerations and wanting to keep everyone healthy in order to adhere to the guidelines espoused by the CDC, by the State Health Department and local health department, this is an innovative approach to providing summer bridge and summer learning for students in a remote way and virtually. And so, you know, that's why we're moving to this platform at this time. Ideally, we would have our summer learning more in partnership with the Y and other partners, give students a robust experience that goes beyond just the literacy and numeracy, but also includes the arts, et cetera, which has become part of Fayette County's signature summer program in partnership with the Y. But due to the current circumstances, obviously, we had to be innovative, creative, in a way that can engage students and reduce stress for families. We understand the stress, and I'm one of the parents that we're all under with students in school, and try to reduce that summer slide that happens.
So here's another follow-up question. And I don't have any problems with the actual module and the actual product itself. So this is really around implementation, utilization, and adoption, right? So what have we learned? I mean, and one of the things that I have heard, especially for some of our struggling families, families of poverty, of course, is when you've got a home where you've got maybe two parents that are there, they're kind of working through, versus someone who's outside the home, somebody else is doing alternative daycare and sitting for a parent. Some of the challenges that some of these particular families face, and we saw this right now in terms of our current environment, as we exit out of this, we go to the summer, how are we going to really monitor to make sure that, you know, of course, if a student has signed up to take those particular classes, there is the extra support that's going to be getting, given to that particular student, helping those particular families? And if we notice there's something, let's say, for example, if a student has signed up, they're not engaging, what are we going to be doing to kind of help that? Because I think we all realize that a lot of students have lost a lot of learning over the last couple of weeks, and we're utilizing the summer as our catch-up period. So I just want to make sure that we're trying to do all that we can to make sure that, again, we're mitigating that Y. I mean, you're going to have some, you're going to have some slippage, but how can we mitigate that to make sure that we're still providing that learning opportunity for our students?
Okay. So I think that the way we're doing that is every school is identifying what we're calling their targeted or focused students. And those are the students that are basically below the 40th percentile or thereabouts in reading and math. They will be assigned to teachers for the summer bridge program. So those teachers will have their group of students that they will contact and reach out to. We've got a sample, right now it's kind of a sample daily schedule. So if Ms. Johns is one of our teachers, she may log on to her Google Classroom at 9:00 in the morning and do a 20-minute live session with her students. That's going to be recorded so that if a student couldn't get on at that time, they got on later in the day. But that's her group of kids that she will be encouraging and contacting and trying to motivate to continue to participate for that time during the summer. So those focused kids, which I think you are really referring to, will have contacts with a teacher throughout the summer bridge program. But the platform itself will be available to every student in Fayette County, pre-K through eighth. But every student won't have necessarily a teacher contact. They just have that. And then the teacher for those focused kids will be able to monitor their data, look at how often they're getting on, how many lessons they've completed, and reach out to them to encourage them to continue to participate. And they are receiving a stipend for their time for that time throughout the summer, either through Title I, ESS funds. Right now, we have 100% participation with all elementary schools that are identifying focused kids with teachers to be their support throughout the summer. And we're almost there with our middle schools with 100%.
And we're also going to have FACEIT to engage families as well.
Yes.
I was going to say, I have a kid that is a focus kid, and I've already been contacted by the person who is going to be her teacher this summer, and she's already given us the information and, you know, like made that contact. And I assume that that's pretty typical. She wanted to make sure we had that contact before school was out, that I had her cell phone number, that I had what I needed, that we had the materials we needed, and that we were ready to go. So.
That's awesome. Yeah, and that was our goal, was to try to get everything laid out, as much in place by the end of this week that we possibly could, honestly, so our teachers could take a break. We know that even though their contract is till June 11, most of them have already worked all those flex hours that they need, you know, and so that they can take a break and come back and be ready to start summer bridge on June 22.
And keep in mind, our teachers are also, some of them are parents as well. And so they have children, you know, they're caring for and working, obviously, with our children in their official capacity. So we definitely want to make sure that they get a little rest, make it a chance to re-energize. And we're greatly appreciative for those teachers who've taken on. This assignment, you know, gets students caught up, prevent further slide, you know, et cetera. These extraordinary times, and it calls for extraordinary efforts, and so we're grateful for our teachers just stepping up.
Hey Manny, while we're on the subject, I'm sorry, Board Member Murphy, while we're on the subject, this does cover a lot of what we think, as Board Member Love says, some of the folks, we think we have deficits in the final semester of school.
Yes.
Cover some of the high-risk folks. What are we doing for eighth graders going to ninth grade next year, having stated that there's a deficit in their final semester of learning in eighth grade and entering an unknown, uncharted world? We've hit the other transition from elementary to middle. What are you doing? Are we doing anything specifically or making anything available specifically for eighth graders going to ninth grade?
This is, I mean, they could certainly, those students identified could use this platform. In the past, we had our bridge.
So that was my question. So if I'm in eighth grade and I'm identified, but I'm going to ninth grade last year, I can use this platform?
Yes.
That's correct.
And actually, we have asked our middle schools to keep their eighth graders throughout the summer for this platform because.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clear. Thank you. Thank you.
So even though it might be a middle school teacher, they would still have contact throughout the summer to work on this. A couple more things to add in as well. Superintendent mentioned the face with family and parent engagement. We are also going to have a supplement with some EL teachers. Schools with their focused students are going to be identifying specific students that need additional support from an EL teacher, so that's going to be part of the summer bridge. And we're also going to have district mental health specialists on call so that they can be on call for any teacher to reach out to them. So all of our summer bridge teachers will know who they are, and they can reach out to them to say, hey, I've got a big concern with this student, can you please help me check on them? Or whatever needs to happen with that support throughout the summer. And then our high schools also have Odysseyware that they had already purchased, which is another platform that high school students can be on to credit recovery and different things throughout the summer.
Well, and it's also important to note, too, that this is not just a summer program, right? It's supplementing what we're doing in the summer and with the, addressing the bridge program and the gaps, but it's also going to be a tool that can supplement instruction next school year, whether that's in a virtual setting or it's in the classroom or what have you. It may be the primary driver of addressing these gaps this summer, but it's going to play a supplemental role next school year.
That's correct.
And that's going to be there to inform instruction in the fall, to Board Member Love's point, and help identify and address some of those gaps that students are going to come into the next school year with.
That's correct. And because of the adaptability, how adaptive it is, it can pinpoint exactly where you're at, you know, strengths, weaknesses, and create the learning platform that's tailored to you as a student. And then because of your unique ID, it stays with you throughout the year. So you can, teachers can go in and, you're right, it's going to play a primary role, but then a secondary role once we start the new academic year.
Oh, you know, one of the things that I would say is we're making this investment and talking about rolling it out is the communication for it. And I think it's important not only for parents to understand that this is a tool that we're using for such a time as this, but through maybe our social media, just to make people aware that this is out there, I mean, for usage. I mean, there's some very, very good points, Superintendent, that you just made, Mindy's made as well, regarding how it can really help families at a self-paced, right? So we have some of those students that we're targeting, but we do realize that given where we ended the school year, that there's some additional support that's going to be needed. And I think it's important not only for our families, but our community, to know that we're making that type of investment in tools like this to be able to help families, and it's out there free. So when you talk about the use of your tax dollars and then investment around how it helps to drive education, I think we shouldn't miss out on the point to really help promote this.
I think that once our senior send-off is over this week and our communications team attends with that, you will see the big, huge blast for summer bridge coming. We're already working on it. Just got to tread the waters of what has to be done first.
Ray says he'll stand out on Main Street with a sandwich board promoting it. I'll bring you some water.
You know, but it's, you know, again, it's about being innovative and creative in this time and space.
I agree.
All right. Well, there is no further discussion. A motion to purchase Imagine Learning as an online learning platform for literacy and mathematics for the 2020-21 school year.
I'll make a motion to order to purchase Imagine Learning as an online learning platform for literacy and mathematics for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. So I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Murphy. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mindy. The next item for your consideration is the adoption of the 2020-2021 tentative budget. Over the past several weeks, you've heard from multiple members of the district leadership team, you heard from school leaders, about the important items this budget will provide for in support of our district strategic plan. At this time, I'd like to ask our Budget Director, Jelaine Mullins, and Chief Financial Officer, John White, to give a brief recap of our proposed budget.
Good afternoon, Board, and Superintendent Calk, and others that are joining us that may have not have seen this presentation before. Next slide, please. Today's agenda, as we've just discussed, approval of the vendor of the online summer learning, which you just talked about, approved, thank you. Recap of the approval and approval of the tentative budget for FY '21, or the year of 2020, 2021, as well as approval for the salary schedules for the same year. Next slide, please. The timeline, you've seen this at least three other times. For those who may be joining us today who haven't seen this, so May 7, we presented various multiple presentations on our imperative of excellent supports. May 14, we continue with excellent supports as well as introduce the imperatives of excellent staff, excellent school and student opportunities. And the 18th, we reviewed with you continued excellent relationships as well as projected revenues and expenses, as well as the salary schedules for FY '21. Next slide, please. Today, special call meeting to review some budget things that we've already discussed, as well as finalize the tentative budget and the salary schedules for next year. Mid-August, as you well know, is when we receive our property assessments and proposed tax rates. And from that point, whenever that is, we have 45 days from receiving the certification from the Kentucky Department of Revenue to approve and adopt rates for FY '21. Next slide, please. Mid-August, fund balance processes are finalized, as well as staffing allocations are adjusted. And in September, we will come back to discuss and present a final working budget for FY '21 and ask the board to adopt incentive rates for FY '21, which September 30 is our deadline for submitting that approved working budget, final working budget, to Kentucky Department of Education. Next slide. And I will turn it over to my colleague, Jelaine Mullins, to discuss the tentative budget.
Good afternoon. We just wanted to give a brief recap of our budget. And one of the things that I wanted to point out that since our budget is over 80% salaries, we wanted to provide a breakdown on how we spend those salary dollars. So approximately 91% of those dollars are in the classroom, are in supporting students, and the other 9% is our district operational supports. With the, next slide. With the COVID pandemic, the federal government has provided districts in states with CARES Act federal funds, and the district is going to be able to receive two pots of money. One is the GIRS dollars. We received about $30 million statewide. The district's allocation will be approximately $1 point million, $1 point million. And the ESTR dollars, we received approximately $194 million statewide, and the district's allocation will be $11.1 million. And we have through September of 2022 to spend those funds. Next slide. Those funds were awarded to districts through the Title I formula, and we have already submitted those assurances back to KDE, and they've already been approved. We also have to provide a spending plan in our GMAT system by June 30, so we will obviously be working on a spending plan for those funds over the next couple of weeks. And we will be requesting reimbursement for those dollars, the same as any other federal grant, using the process of our federal cash request process. Next slide, please. We have provided, been provided some guidance, and they are asking districts, or recommending districts on the GIRS dollars to use those funds for digital learning and to expand the remote food services to students. Also, on the ESTR funds, they have recently, within the last day or two, provided some guidance, and we are going to have some flexibility on how those dollars are spent. But again, we, they are to be used to overcome the barriers that districts have incurred due to the COVID-19 pandemic here in the district. Next slide. Our general fund budget this year for our new program, we are starting a K8 STEM program that will begin in the fall, and the cost of that program is roughly $1.9 million. And we have broke down those costs off to the side so you could see what went into those, how we came about including those numbers. We are also, we have our STEAM building, Academy that's currently in the Oak Johnson Building. Their new facility will be ready this fall. So we are helping with some, they received a lot of donations from their community partners, but again, we are having to put some general fund support in there to make sure they have a state-of-the-art science lab. We are also got some exciting partnerships going on with some of our programs. Locust Trace has partnered with KTLA, and we are providing, our part of the partnership is we are going to provide a .5 equal teacher, an ag teacher, for the upcoming school year to help support that program. And also our KISTA debt service payments, which is our bond payments for our school buses. All of that is funded in the general fund. So this year on our bond schedule, it has went up approximately $168,000. That fluctuates from year to year. We are expecting approximately a 10% increase on our fleet insurance this year, our property insurance. And our fleet insurance, we're seeing an increase in that because of the changes in vehicles that we're adding to the policy, like we replace our buses and do some other type of routine maintenance and replacement cycle each year. Also, we are seeing a increase related to our 504 needs among our students, so we are asking the board to consider increasing that budget for the upcoming school year by approximately $20,000. We are also needing to put portables in place to relieve some overcrowding at Wimburn and Jesse Clark for the upcoming school year. We are seeing some changes in our transportation with our routes, with student, more student ridership, as well as the implementation of our new STEM program. We are also seeing some slight increase in our utilities, and that is due to the opening of our STEM program as well as the procurement of our Park Place facility. And again, I left it on there, but I wanted to make sure that we just reiterated that back in January, we were expected to see a $1.3 million increase in our CER rates, which is our Classified Retirement System employer match. And the rates had already been approved for the upcoming school year, but we received a memo a couple of weeks ago where the Retirement Systems Board, they voted to keep those rates flat for the upcoming school year to support districts and counties, as well as health departments for the upcoming school year to try to help ease the burden of the pandemic. So we're just very appreciative, and I just wanted to make sure that we put that out there. We also have built into our budget our normal 1.5% step increase for experience, and that is due to our employees moving on the salary schedules related to the years of experience that they have in place. That brings our total recurring expenses to approximately. to approximately $6.4 million. If you look at our revenue streams for the upcoming school year, we did not build our budget predicated on the 4% as we have normally done in the past. We looked at the revenue that we had received above budget this year. As you all are well aware, we have somewhere between a 96% and a 98% or 99% collection rate at any given year. And I normally budget at the 96% rate. We do this to help make sure that there's a slight cushion in case there's other revenue streams that do not make budget for that particular year. So currently, we have approximately $4 million of recurring revenue that we have received for this year that has not been budgeted out. And looking at historical analysis between the compensating rate and the 4% rate, we believe that keeping the rate flat as is, we would still generate approximately $3 million. So we will know more as we get those tax rates and assessments later on in the summer. It looks like they're going to be delivered to us, as John alluded, a little later than what we normally receive them. But we'll know more then. But at this point in time, this is our best projection of those revenue streams for the upcoming school year. Also, we are looking at a declining interest rates for the upcoming school year. So we're going to reduce that projection down by approximately $1 million. We are looking at a huge projected decline in our occupational license tax, which is our payroll tax. And that is due predominantly with the economy shutting down due to the COVID-19. We're hoping that as more businesses open up, that our economy will jump back again. But we actually have been working with several different districts across the state, as well as looking at our local government to see the process that they were using. And we have decided that we were going to follow the guidance, or the methodology that was being used at the city level. Again, we will keep those revenue streams. We will be monitoring those almost daily, I'm assuming, at this point in time, and make adjustments to those throughout the year as needed. Again, we went through a very, a very fragile year in our General Assembly again. And the final budget came out very different than what the versions that we had seen come out of the House and the Senate. But with COVID, they gave a very conservative budget for the upcoming school year at the state level. And with that, they held our SIC dollars flat. And with that being said, as our assessments go up and our guaranteed stays flat, it increases our general, our local effort contribution. So we are expecting approximately $2.7 million decline there. We need to go ahead and plan for that. We do expect to have mid-year state reductions that normally come down around Christmas time or right after the first of the year due to the revenues not being over projected revenues at the state level. So we are expecting those to happen. So we do need to plan for that moving forward. As you've seen in previous years, we also have some flexibility where there are flex Locusts dollars that we've received from the state. And we're asking approximately $500,000 of those dollars be put toward our recurring expenses for the upcoming school year. Our federal dollars that were provided through the CARES Act, we are asking that we spend, or at least allocated approximately 60% of those dollars for the upcoming school year and still have an allocation for the '22 school year to be able to support our general fund budget if needed, if we're to shore up any revenue shortfalls that do not rebound once the economy gets moving again. We also relooked our existing budget this year when we were going through our budget process. And we decided to temporarily suspend the pay crew for the 2021 school year. We did another reduction here at IKSS of operating expenses. And that freed up approximately $560,000. Harrison, one of our elementary, one of our Promise Academies, they have restructured their instructional day for the upcoming school year. So we're going to realize about $100,000 that could be reallocated through those efforts. And as well as our dual credit account, the board put some additional dollars in there a few years ago. And we just want to trim that back a little bit until we see the growth in those programs continue to expand. So with that being said, our dollars, our new dollars to support our general fund, our budget package for the upcoming school year is $6.9 million. Are there any questions this fall? Okay, next slide, please. We do have some one-time items that we would like you to consider also. We have an opportunity to capture some additional dollars to help with some of our technology projects. Bob could explain it better, but we have the flexibility to be able to realize an additional $4 million for technology-related infrastructure projects for a small, considerably small match. So we are asking for some one-time dollars to be put toward that project this year. And Mindy had already, the board has already approved the summer learning project platform for the upcoming school year. And we will be deciding the best use of our eligible funding to make sure that we are strategically spending all of our dollars to maximize our general fund efforts moving forward. Next slide. We have, in addition to the general fund, we have special revenue, which is our grants, food service, which in the past has been self-supporting. And we have capital outlay in our building fund, which are used to support our debt service as well as capital projects. This brings our total general fund package up to $686,000, $543,368. And at this time, I'll take any questions you might have related to our budget package for the upcoming school year. Okay. Well, if there's not any questions, before we move on to our salary schedule, I just wanted to, we had, we had the, each department to give a presentation to the board this year related to how they utilize the dollars of the district. And we in the Budget Office have made up a booklet for our board members. And it encompasses our district budget document that you already have in your possession, and the PowerPoint presentations that were provided, along with a summary of not only our departments, but the dollars that are being spent at the school level. I think it will be a very useful tool for you all to have in your possession as you're talking to your constituents this year regarding your budget. And we're going to, I'm so sorry, we didn't even get these back from the printer until today. But we will be placing those in the mail to you guys so you all should receive them this week.
All right. At this time, if there's no further discussion, I will ask for a motion to approve the 2020-21, excuse me, I ask in order to approve the Fayette County Public Schools 2020-21 tentative budget and instruct the superintendent to submit the tentative budget to the Kentucky Department of Education.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the tentative budget as presented, and instruct the superintendent to submit the tentative budget to the Kentucky Department of Transportation, executive department of education, sorry.
I second that, Madam Chair.
Second by Mr., first, a motion by Mr. Love, a second by Mr. Daniels. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board. Next, we'll move on to the 2020-21 salary schedule recommendation. Turn it over to Jelaine to continue her presentation.
Absolutely. We have provided a copy of our salary schedule and markup form. These salary schedules, very few changes for the upcoming school year. No salary increase, but we will see our employees move up on the salary schedule. There are just a few changes related on page two of the salary schedule. There is some language related to how we will move up on the salary, employees move up on the salary schedule based on their education level, particularly when we do like a plus 15 type language. It's just clarifying language. We also, since we are restructuring some of our Harrison Promise Academy, we updated the language to support those changes. We also included an $800 supplemental stipend for our dance team. They have, I guess, a committee, an athletic committee here that meets quarterly or monthly. And they felt like they had enough participation to make sure that they weren't, that they had representation on that committee at the district level. Also, there on page 24, there is clarifying language related to classified pay for transferring experience and increases for educational experience. Are there any questions related to any of our salary schedules or proposed changes for the upcoming school year?
Yes, Jelaine, I've gotten some inquiries about the changes to the classified schedule. Because I know that I asked last time with these changes, like retroactively applied to current employees. But there seems to be a concern among current classified hourly employees that there's almost a penalty if there's a, if they, given this language that we've been presenting, that there's a penalty, a penalty if they transition to a salary position. So even though it may be, for lack of a better term, a promotion, it may require more certifications. If they've been in a classified hourly position a certain length of time at a certain grade level, getting additional certifications, and then we hire someone within the district and they take a salaried position, that could actually result in a reduction of pay. Can you speak to that? Is that, is that a consequence of some of this language here?
I'm going to let Ms. Dyer respond to that.
Yeah, let me first of all clarify that there is no structural change in revisions. This is the way it has been done. But because as we move forward and as we work with our employees, sometimes there are things because of our continuous improvement process that we want to clarify. There has been confusion of the interpretation around this, which is why we have put in the clarifying language. What you're referring to, Board Member Murphy, is there are, in the hourly section of the Classified Hourly Salary Schedule, there are some certifications. Those are teacher certifications. These are things like a plumbing license in our operations, our electricians. They have electrician license, law enforcement. There are extra certifications above and beyond the minimum requirements that you can get, and they count towards a step. A step on the hourly salary schedule is not equivalent to a level on the salaried schedule because that is a year's worth of experience. That's beyond someone's, whether you have a master's, whether you have a rank one, whether you have a rank two, whether you have, that's how you get that on the salaried schedule with education. These aren't college certificates. They are licensures that have to do with your current job. In our technology department, there are several. Like, if you look on that list in the back, there are several different ones for security, cybersecurity. You can go online, you can take courses. In our clerical areas, administrative assistants, they can go get Microsoft Office certified. That will count towards one level, one step. But again, a step on the hourly side is not worth a year's of experience that is equivalent on the salaried schedule. And so those apply for those hourly positions. When someone takes a salaried position, that is a whole different way of setting people up. And that's in statute, based on your education and your experience level. There have been some employees that said, yes, if I took this two-week course and got a certificate, that you should give me a full year's worth of experience over here on the salaried schedule, that it took a teacher a full year. Teacher could not go online and take a certificate. They would have to become certified, like National Board Certified or something like that, to see that increase for those type of certifications to be applicable to the salaried schedule. So that those type of certificates that are allowed on the hourly schedule are not comparable to a step on the salaried schedule that is a year's worth of experience. There are other methods. Again, when someone moves over, we look at their educational level, whether they follow the bachelor's, the master's, master's plus 15, all of those things. So there is no language changing the structure. It is just making it more clear. So when someone reads this, if they're looking at changing, it makes it more clear to them if they didn't ask specific questions. We're hoping that this language helps clarify that from the beginning. So they still get to bring over all their years if it's applicable. But in regs, what counts for a certified teacher, you can't say that a para educator, their experience as a para is going to count as experience as a teacher because in regs, that's just not allowed.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my, so my biggest question, and again, this is something we harped on, or we talked about last time. I just want to make clear that whatever, the action that we're taking today is not adversely affecting current employees, even if there have been situations where perhaps it's been the result of a miscommunication or someone was put into one grade and it wasn't calculated correctly or there was an entry error or something on the part of payroll. I just want to make sure that we're not adversely impacting, one, current employees, and then, two, we're not, we're not disadvantaging our classified departments. We're not putting them in a competitive disadvantage, right? So if someone is given the tools and the flexibility to kind of be hired from within and grow our own, I just want to make sure that supports are in place.
Absolutely. And again, none of this language is making any changes to the current practices. It's just clarifying it. So when someone reads that, it doesn't lead to interpretation, it leads to further explanation.
Okay. And, you know, maybe this is something, just especially for those employees who need to, who are transferring from hourly to salaried positions or classified employees, we just make sure that the communication during that transition and the recruitment process is clear so that they kind of understand the consequences of that. and, and the recruitment process is, is clear so that they kind of understand the consequences of that.
Uh, uh, appreciate that and yes, and we, we have, um, reflected and made some of those changes so that we are now making sure that some of that salary is, um, discussed upfront. Um, oftentimes that's done after they've accepted an offer. Um, so now we have changed some of those practices. So I appreciate that input and anything else, but we will continue to look and make sure, or as clear as possible. Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Any more questions? If there are no additional questions for the staff at this time, I will entertain a motion. Um, I'll ask for a motion to approve the twenty twenty twenty-two one salary schedules as presented for the following. Teacher salary schedule, occupational therapist, physical therapist, law enforcement lieutenant salary schedule, family resource and youth service center coordinator salary schedule and classified hourly employees single salary schedule, certified salary schedule, index supplemental salary schedule for academics, supplemental salary schedule for athletics, administrative additive schedule for administrative and supervisor personnel, substitute teacher salary schedule and student worker, workers salary schedule.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve all salary schedules as presented and listed.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Have a motion by Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mrs. Morris. Is there any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of Fayette County Publics, um, Board of Education.
I'm moved to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Murphy, I think the second was by Mr. Love.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes five zero and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Board.
Goodbye, all.